Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is August 23rd, 2018. First, let's rise and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I would like to welcome our newest member. We have a new student rep this year. Her name is Emily Roburge. Welcome, Emily. Thank you for being here. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the committee? Seeing no one. The next item on the agenda is good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? Mary?
I do. Good news is that we have a nice new meeting room where we're all on ground level.
Mike, did you?
I'd just like to say that we had a lovely two days with the new teachers in district. We do that every year, and it was such a pleasure to meet them. I did indicate that it was very important that they wear their new orange name tag so that we could tell the difference between them and the students as they walk through the halls, particularly at the high school. But they were lovely, a wonderful group of new teachers. We're very excited that they're here.
Thank you. I would just like to share that I was able to get over to the high school today during the walkthrough, and it was really exciting because there were a lot of people there. I was a little worried at 3:00 in the afternoon on a Thursday, but there were really a lot of families over there finding their classrooms, getting their Chromebooks. And I know that the middle school had a back-to-school night tonight also that I wasn't able to go to, but I'm looking forward to the deacon's and the mineet back-to-school night on Monday night from 5:30 to 7:00. Is that right? So encourage anyone with students going to those schools to attend on Monday night.
And we start school next Wednesday. We're very happy and excited, ready to kick off our school year. Our faculty and staff come on Monday and Tuesday, and it's hard to believe it's 2018-19 school year already.
It is. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from meetings on June 20th, June 26th, and July 24th. First, we'll start with the June 20th meeting. Does anyone have any questions or changes to be made to those minutes? No? How about June 26th? No? And July 24th was our workshop meeting. All right, if there are no questions, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. The next item on the agenda is the update on the elementary building project. Mrs. Siemens is going to join us.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we have been meeting all through the summer. We also have subcommittees that have been meeting for various reasons. We're in Module Four right now, which is the schematic design. So part of the work that we're doing now is we're looking at the exterior design of a building. We have met, we have the design of the inside, what the layout will look like, where classrooms will be placed. We've gotten down to the nitty-gritty as far as the placement of doors in classrooms and locations and breakout spaces and where bathrooms should be. So then we've moved on, and the subcommittees that have been meeting are looking at exterior and interior design. Exterior could be what type of material we're using. Could be brick. We're looking at the various style of windows that could be there. When you look at interior, you're looking at flooring. Is it tile? Is it carpet? Is it epoxy? There's a lot of various materials there. So these are things that we're looking at preliminary. We haven't made any final decisions. We're working through that. The reason we have to do that is because the architect company has to come up with some estimates for budget, because that would be really important, and we have to be able to submit that to the MSBA for approval. So every stage that we go through, we always have to get MSBA approval for. So the main charge of the committee, the building committee, is to be sure that we keep the costs down. When we're looking at the design of the front of the school, we've seen different options, and some are very beautiful. But of course, very beautiful buildings are costly. So we're trying to keep that in mind as we go forth. We've looked at detailing the room layouts, as I had mentioned earlier. That's really important to us. We want to make sure our special ed classrooms are mixed in with the general population. We're looking at site plans as far as where do teachers park? Where do we have parking for visitors? How are the buses coming into the building? How are the parents dropping off in the morning? It was important to make sure we have a separate bus drop-off from parent drop-off. We've taken everything that we've learned at mineet with our small school there, and we're making improvements so that we don't have any conflicts and we have an easy traffic We've looked at playgrounds, play space. That's all part of what we're looking to do. We've had to have archaeological surveys, and luckily, we haven't found anything. So the site area where we're going to be building a new school, there haven't been any issues there. As we're looking at all the materials, we're doing site visits to various schools. So we've gone to Duxbury and Hanover, Carver. So we'll continue to do that, to see the different types of materials that are available for us. So we've been working really hard. We'll continue to work. I know in October, we have our town meeting. November, we have a ballot vote. And the communications subcommittee is meeting, and we'll be getting lots of information out for our towns, citizens, and residents so that they have all the information available. We have a website to get all the information that is needed, and that's to make an informed decision. So, as I said, we're working hard, and we'll keep working hard. Any questions?
Yeah.
Just one about the playgrounds. So I know that the PTA is going to pay for a playground over here at the middle school. Are you going to be able to use that playground back at the other site?
I know we have a history of moving playgrounds, so very possibly. Or we may want to leave it there, donate it to the middle school, because I know there's all the areas. We may not need to move it because of the fact that the playgrounds will be part of the new building. So we'll have an area for preschool and kindergarten, and then we'll have a play area for grades one through four as well.
Okay.
And yes, that is a question that pops up a lot on Facebook as playgrounds. So there will be one. Unfortunately, due to a fire at the factory, it probably won't arrive until mid-October. But it's coming.
Anyone else have questions? Thank you. I just want to point out that there is a link to the website that you spoke of on the Wareham Public Schools website, right on the main page, and there's really a lot of information on there. So if anyone wants answers to any questions, there's a question and answer section on there, and there's really a lot of information. It was just updated today, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the acknowledgement and confirmation of the chair of the Wareham School Building Committee. Turn it over to the superintendent.
As you know, Mr. McMillan is no longer with us. At his departure, the building committee nominated and voted Mr. Jeff Swett to serve as building committee chair. So I'm bringing this to the committee, to the school committee at this time, to share that information with you, and then ask that you would confirm the fact that Mr. Swett will be serving as the chair for the building committee.
And we are looking for a vote?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is it a requirement, like an MSBA requirement, that we have to vote, like the school committee votes that?
I think that just so we can have it in record and in the minutes.
Okay. I'm perfectly happy. So moved.
Okay. Second. Did you have a question? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
The following gifts have been received, and I would ask the committee to please approve the, for us to receive them. The first is $5,000 from the Wareham Viking Booster Club for the concession stand. Many grants to the high school from the middle school and high school PTA as follows. $250 for the Fuel Up to Play 60 program. $250 for the special education trip to Heritage Garden. $250 for the adult program field trip to Heritage Garden. $250 for the eighth grade dual enrollment cookout. And $132 for the cooperative school field trip to BCC and Battleship Cove. I would ask the committee to please approve the gifts.
Is there a motion to accept the gifts?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero. The next item on the agenda is the report of the business manager.
Good evening. Give me one minute, just a second. Okay. Did it turn on? It should be.
There it is.
There it is. Thank you. That one. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
I want to thank you for inviting me to Wareham. I'm enjoying my first six weeks. Loving every minute of it, learning a lot. Have a lot more to learn, but, so this is my first go at the report in Wareham. I tried to follow some of what Michael had. I'm still digging through the weeds to learn everything, so be patient with me. Now, let's see.
Slide show up there.
Where is my slide?
Slide show.
Top in the arms.
Took me a while.
There we go.
Yeah, I know. I just figured.
There we go.
I know where it is. I had a hard time figuring out how to do the handouts, too.
Okay. So this is the FY18 interview report. It's probably going to be a lot more basic than what you're used to, just because I'm still taking in all the information, and I don't know everything that went on during 18. So just to begin with, I gave, I put up an update of, this was the 18 budget. It was voted at $28,380,000. It was a $427,520 increase over the prior year. The, I give a comparison of the two budgets, so I give the budget allocation for 18 versus 17. I also have listed the expenditures for the two different years, so you can see what we've spent, what's been encumbered from year to year, which are things that have been purchased but have not yet come in or been paid for in FY18, so we carry them into 19. And then the amount of money that was possibly returned to the town last year. It appeared that we returned nothing, or 42 cents, is what I could find in the records. This year, it's about $1,100. So we're close. I mean, my plan is in the future that we try to balance right at zero, but something's coming cheaper, something's coming a little more, so you can't really bet your right to the penny when you're trying to end the year. I've been working closely with the town accountant. Built a great relationship with her, so we're having lots of fun balancing accounts together. I thought it'd be nice to give a little update on Circuit Breaker, a little history. I don't know how familiar everyone is with the Circuit Breaker and what it's looked like over the last few years. So I try to keep things as transparent as possible so everyone involved knows where we are. So it gives you each year what the reimbursement rate has been, how many eligible students, what the total eligible expenses were, what the foundation budget was, which leads to the net claim, and then the amount that's been reimbursed. We don't have FY19's information yet, but that should be coming soon. And then I went into the grants a little bit. I'm still researching and learning about the grants, so I try to give you an idea of, you know, a list of the federal grants. These are the federal grants, what we budgeted, what we expended, and what was remaining at the time. Many of these grants roll over into another year. They're multi-years, so that money does not go away. The grants that end, we make sure we spend every last cent that they give us. These are the state grants. Circuit Breaker is considered a state grant, so this is what we budgeted, what we spent, and what's remaining to carry into FY19. There's $51,000. There's an academic support grant that has not been spent, and it just gives you a list of all the different state grants that we have. And the total in state grants is 1.5. We spent 1.4. And again, the $74,000 will roll into FY19 and have to be spent in FY19 if it's to carry Then we get into some of the private grants. Some of them may not be new. Some of them may be grants that were given to us in the past years that we just haven't expended, and it gives you an idea of, you know, Zero Robotics, Target has given us a grant, Cape Cod, Five Cent. And it goes down the list of all the different private grants that we have in the system right now, and what the remaining balances are. There are several pages of private grants. Some of them are listed as grants, and like E-Rate is not necessarily a grant. That's more of a reimbursement on what we get from some of our telecommunications, but it's categorized in our budget as a grant. So it gives you the list here and what the total is in the private grants. It's $129,743 is what we had. We spent $75,000, so we have a balance of $54,000. Revolving and donation accounts, we have lots and lots of those, so I'm really trying to spend a lot of time learning all of those revolving accounts, because there's quite a few. Revolving, they're listed as revolving accounts. I call some of them donation or gift accounts, because they're not really revolving. Revolving is something where we're collecting a fee, and what comes in is going back out. So some of these are gifts, and over the course of the next few months, I'm hoping to work with the town accountant to kind of categorize the gift accounts or donation accounts as such, because it's usually, like she just talked about, a donation or a gift And we have quite a few of those as well. School choice is revolving, so that's, I know that's one of the areas that we tend to look at. Driver's Ed is also, had a budget of $38,000, expended $27,000, sorry. And then they continue on to the next page. So it gives you the budget totals on all revolving or donation accounts, what we spent and what we still have remaining to spend. And again, that's, most, a lot of them are revolving, so that money can revolve from year to year. We don't have to expend it. Questions? And I'm sure there's lots and lots of questions. I also have lots and lots of questions on the budgets and what I'm going through, so be patient with me, but I will answer them the best I can.
Anyone have questions? Mary?
I'd like to wait. I've got a bunch. I'd rather wait till everybody else, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure. Rebecca, do you have any questions? No? Laurie? No? I, oh, go ahead, Mary. No, no, go ahead.
So just going back to Circuit Breaker, just to clarify for me, the remaining balance is what came from last year's Circuit Breaker? Have we received this year's yet?
We've received this year's.
We have.
Which is?
No.
We have, we have, we have 18. We don't have 19. It's always a year behind.
Right. Okay.
So we have not. And I think I had said that earlier, that they haven't, I looked, they haven't given us the rate or the percentage of reimbursement yet.
Yeah, that usually comes later, like closer to the time. So then my other question I have, what is, and you may not know, I mean, be fully aware of what it is, but what exactly is global ed tuition?
Global ed tuition. Oh. I know. Thank you.
Students that are full-year tuition, students that come in, pay a tuition rate?
Well, like where the ones, where they're coming from?
Oh, this year, we're having some from China, the Netherlands, or Norway.
Okay. And is that, I'm trying to remember what we put for the tuition, $15,000?
No, I think it was like $14,000.
Okay. All right. And then, again, you may not know the answer to this question either, and I understand if you don't. So I've brought this up before with Michael about West Wareham Academy tuition, so I'm confused as to what, I mean, it's been closed for now, I think, two years or so. So I'm confused why there's money there. And then also, the income-eligible contract no longer exists, so I am questioning why do we have a line item that says income-eligible preschool?
We'll look into it.
I can look, I can look into it. My guess is, and I understand that the academic tuition is no longer, but there may be money still sitting there that we need to.
And then the next question is, why would we leave money just sitting there? I know, it's not, you don't know.
That's a great question. It's something that we'll probably look into. Once we, I dig deeper into all these accounts, and, you know, I don't know right now which ones are open, which ones are active or not active. Still going through that process.
Okay. No, I understand.
But when we do, that's exactly it.
Check on what, the only thing, I can guess that what the income-eligible preschool line really is, is tuition. Is that what it is?
It could be.
Yeah, that's my guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of changing the title on it. And I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready?
No.
Oh, I have one question about Circuit Breaker. So it's my understanding that we try not to spend the previous year, we try to go into the next year with a balance. So my question is, is the balance that we're going into the 18-19 school year, is that where we'd hoped it would be? Is that where it's been in the past, or is it not?
So it's $51,000. I don't know what the hope was. I don't know. Yes, please.
So the hope is that we're able to keep some of it to put into the stabilization fund. That's the hope. And we've had some cuts in our tuition budget for out-of-district, which we're hoping to be able to transfer some of that savings back over to the stabilization fund. So right now, we're hoping with all the training that we've done for all the team chairs on Circuit Breaker this year, that the FY19 year is going to look much better. We're going to have an increase again, as we've had, like, on the trend throughout the past couple of years. But we do hope at the end of the year to have that balance. But we still do have POs out for some of the tuition up until June 30th that haven't gone through. So we're still kind of waiting that total that's there right now is not going to be final, because we do use some of that Circuit Breaker money for out-of-district tuition.
So it'll be even less than what it is now?
It might be, and it might not be a ton less, it might be $5,000 less, but we still have to wait for everything to kind of, the dust to settle. And as soon as we get to that point, we'll be able to have a more solid number, and then the hope would be to transfer that over to the stabilization fund.
Okay.
For next year.
Okay.
Just one more question, Melissa, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So I'm just curious, what type of training are you doing with the team chairs for Circuit Breaker?
So the team chairs traditionally have not had Circuit Breaker training. It's been something that's been held in the student service office. So I've been kind of utilizing all of the new training for all of the team chairs, so the team chairs writing the ed plans are aware of what is Circuit Breaker eligible and what is not, and making sure that we're able to transfer that into all the IEPs and be able to maximize our Circuit Breaker monies, so.
That's a tough task.
It's a tough task. But I have trained now half of my team chairs. The other half are going in the fall, so that they're all up on current practices and able to really maximize our Circuit Breaker monies, so that we're able to bring that money back to the community and the school system.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, all right, while we're still on Circuit Breaker, I guess, so you look at the amount reimbursed, 86,2568. Now, that's how much we received?
Yes.
What, I couldn't find any relationship of that number to any of the other numbers in that row. Like, there's no percentage, there's no difference, like, I don't get it.
So typically, they give us 30-ish percent back of whatever is eligible for Circuit Breaker. So we put in our claims for all Circuit Breaker materials, or all Circuit Breaker services that are eligible under the state guidelines. They come back with an amount that they approve, so we might put in a certain amount, they might challenge some of it.
So if it says 72% reimbursed, where did 30% come from?
So 72% reimburse is not what we end up getting back.
Oh.
Yeah, we end up getting back.
So that should say like 30-ish percent.
30-ish percent.
Yeah. So that's wrong.
Now, that's what.
It's state reports.
Yeah.
State report, okay.
So if I can, so my understanding of it, so the total eligible expenses, it's everything they submitted to be reimbursed. The foundation amount is the state sets a foundation amount, which is $42,000.
It's about $42,000.
They take that right off the top of our tuitions.
Right.
And then it leaves the net claim, give or take some, because they exclude some, they say it's not eligible, and then they take 72% of that remaining amount.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I'll move into the report, and it's true, you mentioned, you know, that you weren't here. You weren't here for this whole year, but the superintendent was, so I'll probably direct most of my questions to her. And I would hope that she'd help you with this, right?
Of course she'll help me.
No, I mean, that she did help you with this, right?
Of course she did.
Because I did, I found it really, really light. It was frankly incomplete. There's no narrative, it doesn't tell a story, and it's not on you. It's not on you, because you weren't here. You don't know that story. So, hold on. What it does, it does do a good job of describing the grants and the revolving funds, and I have to go into some of those. So I'm going to, I guess we're, Ms. Fay, I'd probably like to ask you some questions. There are some sped-related grants and revolving accounts, and I just want to understand, I want to make sure, in your opinion, did those, all of those sped dollars go to sped things?
Absolutely.
They did. I mean, you got, you weren't denied any sped funding, you weren't told not to spend any certain sped funding?
Nope. I have basically four grants that are controlled by my office, and they're all the special education-specific grants. So I control the 240, which is our IDEA grant. I control the 274, which is our program improvement grant. The 262, which is early childhood, and the 298, which is also an early childhood program improvement grant. So those are the four grants that are controlled by my office. All of those monies are spent either on salaries, tuitions, professional development, trainings, and programs, or stipends for some of our specialized, our specially-trained, like the RBT, the Registered Behavior Tech, and the ABA, people that work with our students in our district. I spend every penny, down to the penny.
Good.
On all services that directly service our students in our community.
I just want to make sure the sped dollars are all going to sped.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, is that, 101, 101, 13? So I'm just going to mention some of these, these accounts that where we expended $0 and try to understand why. For example, we've got academic support at $479. I don't care about that one, but literacy professional development at $294, professional learning network at $5,000. These were all budgeted but never spent, and they all remain at full. Why? Like, why didn't we use them for what they were intended? And that's a question to the superintendent.
Sure. Well, depending on what they were received for would depend on how we would access it. So if academic support, whoever had received that grant, then that would be spent by that person.
So it's per individual?
Pardon?
It would be like per individual?
Per department.
So if it was a department, whatever department they're responding, if they needed to spend the money, they would spend the money. And I would have to research to see who was responsible for academic support or literacy professional development, something like that.
Don't they have a deadline as to when they have to spend it?
For federal grants, if it rolls-
Okay.
It can roll.
Okay.
Some of these are gifts, though, some of these accounts that are classified under these grants, the private grants-
Our gifts.
Are gifts.
Okay, so then-
So they're not gonna follow the same regulations as the state.
Right, and then there's a mixture, really.
Right.
Under grants, there's the, like, reimbursement, which would be Circuit Breaker-
Right.
-and the other one that was mentioned, and then-
Like the preschool, yeah.
Income eligible is tuition, so it really is all lumped together.
Right.
So should, the title really should be grants, reimbursements, tuitions, so.
Right, and I think that that's what, as we shift from one business manager to the other, that's what we're trying to figure out and sort out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, Ms. Morgan asked the question, I was gonna ask about the academy tuition, I still don't understand, so, so we have twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars sitting there from, in the budget, remaining from when it was closed, and why haven't we used it?
Well, it would depend on what it was put in there for. It could be the tuition from the alternative schools, the night school, so I would have to research-
You don't get tuition from the alternative, do you?
Night school students?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I would have to research to see what the deposits have been.
Okay.
So it actually could be night school money?
It could be.
Right? Okay.
And we have had several night school students from other communities register this year, so-
Right. Wouldn't that be under school choice, though, the ones from other communities?
Not for night school.
It used to be.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I apologize.
It's okay. You used to have a large number, actually, of school choice there.
Okay. It, state wards, I'm curious, like, what is that, like foster kids? It's so like, I mean, you know, that was budgeted and expended dollar for dollar, but like, what sort of things did that fund?
Well, it would depend on, I mean, it could help cover transportation, it could help cover some of the other expenses for students.
Doesn't McKinney-Vento cover that?
Not for, no, because any child that is in foster care, that is under state jurisdiction, cannot be classified as McKinney-Vento.
Really?
So once the department takes, I don't wanna say possession, but once the department takes-
Responsibility.
Help me with the word.
Responsibility.
Responsibility, custody of a child away from a family, that child can no longer be considered homeless ever.
Okay.
Whether they're in foster, group home, star program, doesn't matter.
Okay, will we, will we be transporting them?
Transport them.
I mean-
If they were, if they're from here, yes, of course we do.
If they're from here, yeah. And if they're fostered here but are from another community that's fiscally responsible, then that's a whole different story, but I'm guessing that's what this was originally set up for, but-
School choice, remaining balance of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, is any of that earmarked for this year?
Yes, we would be using it for some this year, some of-
Roughly how much?
I would have to go back and see what Mr. Mike McMillan had paid.
Okay. All right, so I don't see any in-kind listed here.
Any what?
Oh, I'm talking to Ms. Owen.
Any what, I'm sorry.
In-kind from the town.
In-kind.
In-kind, Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes.
Do we know what it is?
I don't have the figure off the top of my head.
This is, this is my frustration, this is the end of year report, it's supposed to be a encapsulation of what went on during the year, and usually it's about eight million bucks that's not being represented in this report, and I'd like to know, it should be in there. How about per pupil expenses? What are those? They're not in the report.
This is just a summary of the end of the year. The end of the year report will be worked on in the next several months, and that's the copy that you'll receive.
Right, this is not, so I asked that same, a similar question of Susan before the meeting, this isn't the report that's supplied to Dussey, it's not the, that end of the year report that maybe you're referring to, and that report is not due yet, it's not-
Yeah, I looked at last year's report, it had the in-kind, it had, it had a great explanation-
It was truly the end of year, right?
It was, it was August twenty-third, it seemed, to the day, and it was, it was, and it had an explanation of every, you know, major account, and why it went up or down, very, very brief summary, that's all it was, it was just a good capsule, but, but that was not, that's not in here, and it is what it is, but I wish it was more. And I think that'll do it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? The business manager? No? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is suggested new policies for review and adoption. So over the summer, we had a workshop meeting to discuss policy, policy adoption, similar matters. So we did, with the help of Dr. Schwam, we went, and these policies, most of them, are just stating what has been practiced up until now, and it's just putting it into writing to include with, with our policy manual. So we can go through them, each one. The first one is school committee member ethics, and instead of duplicating what we've already put in place with our school committee protocols, which is what we discussed right after the election, when, when the board reorganized, that's what is referred to in this policy. So again, it's just stating something that we've, we've already put in place. Does anyone have any questions about that one?
Are you looking for a vote on these tonight?
No, because if you look further-
I did, I did.
So under policy adoption, we wouldn't vote on them, so they'd be introduced tonight-
Yeah.
-and discussed, and then we'd be looking to vote on them at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and I thought, I figured, well, that wasn't policy yet, I had no idea, so-
Right. So we'll still go by that.
Yeah, but, but that seemed redundant, the policy adoption and the policy development, it seemed like they say the same thing.
Well, I think we kept them separate so that, you know, if there was a change to be made in either, either policy, it would only affect one or the other. Is that, would you agree, Dr. Schwam, that that's why? Yeah.
And, and if we're already doing it, then why do we, why do we need a policy? Like, why, I'm a big fan of less is more.
I think it's pretty standard for school committees to have these policies, and I think really there, it's an omission in our policy manual. You know, we've had discussions about policies, and so I think it became apparent that we didn't have a policy that addressed-
Policy.
Approving policy. It does, when I say those words, but it, I think that it is something that we're missing in our policy manual.
Okay.
So again, the first one is member ethics, which, again, refers back to the protocols that we discussed back in April. So I guess we could vote on each one, well, no, we're not gonna vote tonight, sorry, we're not gonna vote tonight, we're just gonna discuss it. So I guess I would just ask if anyone has any questions about this policy, proposed policy. No? Okay. So the next one is policy development, and again, it, it just pretty much states what has been past practice of this school committee. Does anyone have any questions about that one? Policy adoption, again, like we just alluded to, so these policies would be introduced and discussed at a meeting like this, and then, you know, to give time to consider, for consideration, then the vote would be taken at the next school committee meeting. And again, we have a policy review committee, and that, the committee comes into play when policies are being changed. The school committee would be the body that would adopt policy. Any questions about that one? Discussion? No? And policy revision and review, again, just puts into writing what we've already been doing with the policy review committee, which meets during the school year to address any changes to policy. Policies have to be reviewed every five years, so those policies are, are chosen and by the superintendent and by Mrs. Ruiz, to be reviewed, but again, anytime any member wants to take another policy that isn't being scheduled to be reviewed, to be reviewed, that can certainly be done at a policy review meeting.
Where are we in that cycle of five years?
Well, so if you look at a policy, it'll, there'll be a date, there'll be a list of dates that they've been reviewed, and so, you would, I assume you'd go back five years, and so those policies that were reviewed five years ago, so that's, it's like a rolling process.
Every year, the process is every year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, the policy review committee is made up of school committee members, teachers, administrators, community members, it's a, it's a broad committee. Yes.
When is policy review meeting for, this year?
Generally, the first meeting's in October.
Is, has it been constituted for this year?
The committee?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Well, the school committee members-
We usually wait till the school starts, so we know what parents are on what, are interested in, who's at what school.
Thank you.
And I believe the administrators are on a, like, a three-year schedule, or, yeah, so they go on and off.
The school committee members were announced back in April, which went wrong.
Correct. Correct.
I just wanted to mention that oftentimes, people in our business confuse procedure with policy, they interchange those words often, I think, just it's, it's a normal process, I think, when you're speaking about doing something, they wanna call, they, they'll use the word policy. I think having this outlined clearly will help us to bring, whoever brings up that word, to say, well, is it a procedure that you want, or a policy, and if it is a policy, then you have to go to these directions, so to speak, in order to make it that, right? So it helps, I think, in a lot of ways to clarify some of that confusion.
Well, as a longtime member of the policy review committee, as a parent, there were many discussions there where we'd say, well, shouldn't we be including this in the policy? And we have to step back and say, well, no, because that's a procedure, so, yeah. And then the last one is the family engagement, so I'll ask Dr. Schwam to talk about that one.
Yeah, that's a requirement of ESSA now, when you're connected to Title One, to have a formal policy that's voted upon by the school committee, and as just part of the process. So I took all of the language that was offered on that site and Warehamized it, as I call it, and so it's really just what we're required to do as a Title One district.
Okay. Could I ask you a question about that policy?
Okay.
I hope, I don't have it in front of me, but, okay. Well, it says that you will conduct with families an annual evaluation of the content and effectiveness of the family engagement policy. That's the beginning of the sentence. So my question is just, how will you do that?
Well, we do that anyway, because of the, the regular, the regular procedures that are in place for Title One require you to collect all of this documentation along the way, right? And so you have to inform families, you have to give them a report card that they send separately, that you send out to all of the families. We post them on our website every year, and the principals are responsible for gathering information from their, from the people that are providing the services within the school, as well as give the families information about what they could do to help us as we help their children. And so there's a lot of feedback overall, and we survey families, and we get a lot of, the schools do surveys, we receive a lot of feedback overall, and it's a whole school initiative, K to four, so we don't separate out, everyone receives the benefit of Title One in those grades, actually, it's pre-K to four. So we just use all of that feedback.
Okay, so it's really something you're already doing?
Yes, it's part of the requirements anyway. A lot of what's stated in here has been and is part of what we're required to do, and report back to the federal government when we're through-
Mm-hmm.
-with our work.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So again, those policies will be on the agenda again next time, and we'll be voting on them at that time. So certainly, if you have any questions or comments that, you know, you don't have tonight, if you have them before the next meeting, certainly, feel free to ask. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the article for Fall Town Meeting Warrant. I believe there's more than one, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you wanna speak to that?
Sure. The first that I will be talking about is a transfer of McKinney-Vento. This is a warrant article that has been placed on the town warrant for a number of years. This allows the town to vote to put the money back from the McKinney-Vento that's received back into the school transportation revolving account. The second one is standard language, which needs to be in the town article for, the town warrant as worded, it's from MSBA, and there's no change in the article. This asks if we will bar, if the town will borrow the money for the school building committee, and then there's a motion, at this point, we do not have the amount of money that the town would need to appropriate for the new school. It will be placed in early October.
Okay. And so you, we need to vote-
Yes, you do.
-to approve these items, yes.
Discussion? Just on the, the school building article, this number, I've seen this number, I've heard it so many different ways, but it looks like it's set in stone here now about the reimbursement. If, do I read this correctly? It says, "Any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one seventy-four and ninety-eight hundredths percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA." So is that guaranteed now? If, not seventy-four, just about seventy-five percent?
Yes.
That, that sounds pretty good.
Excellent, it's very good.
Yeah, it sounds darn good. So, all right, thank you.
Again, it's seventy-five percent of eligible expenses-
Exactly, yes.
So it's not seventy-five percent of the whole project.
Exactly, and then that needs to be explained, because people, people hear that, and they say, oh, they're, you know, they're not being transparent. No, we are, but, but not all of it is eligible, there's some stuff we need that doesn't, isn't included.
Right.
But, but yeah, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions on those two items?
The only thing that I would say would be, we will read this into the minutes verbatim, because this will need to be sent, our minutes go to MSBA, and they need to see that you voted the exact wording.
Okay, so when someone makes a motion to approve, they need to read this?
They don't have to read it, because we'll-
Oh, but this will go, okay, okay.
Save Michelle. I was like, save Michelle.
I think, I think the clerk should be doing it.
Not tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
The first is approval of bill and payroll warrants. You have them listed, and I know that you would not want me to read all these, so I would ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero.
All right, next update on opening day. I've asked the principals to join us tonight, so if you have any specific questions about the buildings, there, you'll have firsthand information. But what I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview. So Decces, right now, we're looking in kindergarten for class sizes approximately seventeen, in first grade, twenty-one, and we have ten classes, and in second grade, twenty-one students with seven classes. Right now, our anticipated enrollment at Decces is six hundred and fifteen students. I'd also share with you that the playground has been moved from Minnet for the preschool and is installed at Decces. Moving to Minnet, currently, third grade has a total of one hundred and seventy-five Moving to Minnet, currently, third grade has a total of one hundred and seventy-five students. We have one class with nineteen students, three classes with twenty, two classes with twenty-one, one class with twenty-two, one class with twenty-three. In fourth grade, we have a total of one hundred and ninety-five students, one class with twenty-two, five with twenty-three, and two with twenty-four. So a total Minnet population of three hundred and seventy. At the middle school in fifth grade, the average class size is twenty-one point seven eight. In sixth grade, twenty point nine, and in seventh grade, eighteen point eight. A total of five hundred and seventy-five, or, excuse me, a total of five hundred and twenty-five students at grade seven, five through seven. Also, at the middle school, open house was this evening, special ed open house was also this evening, and on September eleventh, the Wareham PTA will be meeting in the library at the middle school from six-thirty to seven. Currently, the high school will have six hundred and thirty-six students. The average class size for regular ed courses would be twenty-four, and elective courses are seventeen. We have seventeen students at the high school that are enrolled in the Bridgewater State Dual Enrollment Program, and fall sports begin today. We still have several open positions. We're in our final stages of interviews, and we hope to have our staff fully complete by Wednesday. If not, we have contingency plans. Currently, in transportation, and I would ask if there are any parents listening tonight that have not turned in their registration for buses, to please, please, please do. We've sent a number of notices. We've also contacted parents who have not turned in the forms on several occasions, and we still have a number of people that we have not heard from. Currently, I have fourteen buses for the middle school and high school. The average count would be forty-six. We've had five hundred and ninety-six students register. In Deccus and Minnet, we currently have ten buses. The average count will be fifty-eight, and we have five hundred and eighty-nine students registered. We have four new special ed buses getting ready to go on the road, and that was purchased through the EPA grant, and we also have leased four new vans to help with our out-of-district runs. The question that I've heard from many people is, when will you hand out the bus passes? The bus passes, right now, are targeted to be handed out during the first week of school, and we're waiting on the list so we can generate the bus pass. It will be a plastic, like your ID badges that will be printed. If we have a picture in our power school, the student's picture will be placed on the bu, the bus pass. We, and I've, you know, and I've shared information with you throughout the summer regarding the modulators. We continue to struggle with finding a company that will deliver the modulators to us, and so we're looking at Plan B. We have a construction modular that can be delivered to us that would hold office spaces because what we're looking at doing is placing staff who need the office space in those modulators. Students will not be in the modulators. And the reason why we're doing that's twofold. The biggest reason is it changes the coding once students come in the modulators, and so it's easier to get them in, and Mrs. Chandler's done a wonderful job in scheduling. The space is not needed for a classroom, however, they are needed to house staff. So right now, we would be looking at possibly bringing in a, a construction modular. I've been having a conversation with the town administrator, and it looks like this might be a way that we would go. If we would do it, the cost is very, very low. The total cost would be approximately seventeen thousand dollars a year. We would not ask the town to borrow any money for the seventeen thousand, and we would work it out between the town and the school of how we would cover that charge. And finally, I would like to share with our community that we have many, many, many hard-working teachers in our district, and I know that they, I've heard so many nice comments about the staff. Well, you now have a way to share the good news about a teacher from the new commissioner of education. There's a new website where you can go and you can share actual stories about how a person has affected your child, made such a wonderful dis, difference, and it will be posted. They're also going to be doing some video taping of teachers and then placing it on the website. So I would urge you to go to www.mass.gov/AmazingEducators to tell your story about the wonderful things that our teachers are doing in Wareham. So if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
No problem.
For transportation, so it's a little under twelve hundred kids?
Mm-hmm.
What's the, how many did we bus last year, do you know?
We bused approximately fourteen, fifteen.
So do we think that gap is just people who have not signed up yet, or people that are actually not going to be using our bus?
Yeah, that's, that's one of our concerns, and so what we're doing to cover that is we're putting two floater buses on during the first several days of school. So if we have a group of students that we didn't have information that they were riding, we still have, we're not going to be overloading our buses, and we have a way to get them. We'll also be following up with those students and sending those forms home because we really just need to know.
And how long are we going to let it go for? I got a call. Don't get me, I signed up, paid, but didn't fill out the right, I totally was one of the people who got a call.
Yeah.
I would have been too.
You know, we're going to go for about a week, and then we've, we've just, a decision must be made.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I have a question on the modules. One, I just want to clarify what I heard. Was it a total of seventeen thousand or seventeen thousand a year?
No. It is a total of the first year of seventeen thousand, and then the second year, it would be approximately nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
For the, for how long? I mean, so the second year would end it, or?
No, and then we can extend as long as we would need to extend. It's about four hundred dollars a month.
Okay. All right. And then when we're done with them, what do they do? Just take them away?
Take them back.
All right. And then the other question about them, the staff that's going in there, are there any related services people that are going in there?
No.
No, because they service students.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you while you were talking, but, but what, what just happened with the, with the portables?
We haven't been able to find a company that will move the portables to our site. We've contacted a number of agencies, and we've either, they've refused to move them, it's not a big enough job, or they just didn't want to do it. So we're continuing to contact, but we know we need to have a Plan B, so that's when we started looking at this.
So, and Plan B is, is what?
A construction modular, which is like an office space.
So, so just one?
All, all we need is one.
And how many of the free portables were we going to get?
Pardon?
If we did, if we got, if we did get the free portables, how much, how much, how many were we going to get?
Two.
Two. What happened? Like, this, we've been doing this since we voted.
You're exactly right. We have been chasing this all summer with emails, with phone calls, with trips.
I mean, it was totally pruded, and I was thrilled, I was thrilled to hear we're getting the free portables, but in, but in hindsight, I mean, should we have just bought them?
Well, if we, you know, one reason why we looked at the free portables, because if we purchased them, we would be looking at probably February.
Fe, February, really?
Yeah, that's what we were told by the companies. I mean, I had Mr. McMillan on this from day one, and-
April, I think.
-you had to go out to bid, you had to design them, it's just not as easy as-
I wish, I wish that was mentioned during this whole process. I, I probably would have fought a little harder for Minnet.
Well.
One other question too. What, what is going to happen with where the staff that are scheduled to go into these modules going to be until we get them?
Right now, they're located in the small gym.
Okay. Are they mainly clerks, or?
Pardon?
Is it mainly clerks, secretaries, or?
So this is a preliminary idea, but as of now, my specialists are on carts anyway, music.
Yep.
Power.
Right.
And my new dramatics class, I'm very excited about, dramatic play is so awesome. And it's, so they're on carts, but they need office space for their preps. They need space for storage, and so that's my preliminary idea, is to put the specialists out there so they have a space.
Did they have space last year?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
But they were still on-
Right, on the carts, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I understand.
We do a very good job of spacing out.
All right. Thank you.
So is, I'm sorry, so is it true that you've just reworked the space that you have so that the p, the staff who are servicing students are in the building? Correct. Not in the portables, so that students are never going to be in the portables? Correct. So the interesting thing about this is that I haven't, my population has only, I've only gained forty students populated, population-wise, because the preschool is fifteen students per class, right? So my student population hasn't grown, it's my staff population that's grown. So that's where I'm really looking out for the staff at this time. Our students are comfortable, safe, all have great learning spaces, but it's just our staff right now that we just want to make sure we have enough space so we can spread out. So I guess I go back to what you said, Mike. So why, why is this not a good thing? They were able to achieve what they needed for much less than what we had expected.
What, oh, the plan, the Plan B?
Can I say this too? I think the original, original plan, when we went back in, like, January, before January, remember, our first thought was to have grade three come over. So our first plan, when we all sat down, was to have grade three over at Deccus. So at that point, we were looking at modulators, we were thinking of ten classrooms, or, so that was the first, very first plan before. And then we reworked it and said, "Well, we're going to try this." So then we had preschool come over. So the modular plans, even of itself, had changed a number of times.
No, I, I remember that. I remember there was the silver lining of going with this other way of buying less modulators and stuff. But I remember we had to rush this vote because it was so important to get the ball rolling on these modulators, and now it's, we're going to open, even, even, even if everything went perfectly, you're telling me we wouldn't have got them until February or maybe even April? It's like, what, what's the point? But now, but now, so this Plan B, when will we, when will they arrive?
It could arrive next week.
So, all right. And that's for staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So I mean, I don't see, I, I don't see a, a negative side, I only see a positive side.
And one of the other reasons why we had to make the decision is we were behind the eight ball on scheduling and other pieces that we needed to get in the planning stages. In fact, our scheduling for our buildings has, has never taken place so late because we needed to know the population.
Since I've spent, I've spent the last six weeks on modulators, so I've met with the building inspector, I've met with several modular companies who actually lease them, rent them, sell them.
I got an email from you, I think, on the, you, on the thirteenth, saying you were waiting for a quote when everything was hunky-dory and-
So we had David, the building inspector, went up and looked at them. We had several companies, we had ModSpace, we had Triumph, we had Diamond, look at them. What came back was most of them, because of the age of the building, the age of the modulators, they were built in nineteen ninety-nine, nobody wants to move them because structurally right now, they're fine, but they haven't been touched since nineteen ninety-nine. So they're afraid you start to move it, it's not going to make the delivery.
Right.
And they basically said, "The amount of money you're going to spend to try to get them moved and repaired and set up, you might as well go a different route." And I had them actually put that to us in writing because we went back and forth. They came out here, they looked at our site here, they went to Westboro and looked at them, and they came back with, they, they wouldn't come back with a quote. They basically said, and what Triumph said, being one of the more popular companies, if we're saying in writing that we won't move them, the surrounding companies are probably not going to want to touch them either. I mean, they're, they're old.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's from my standpoint, so we went in a different direction.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is-
Oh, oh, so we're-
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mike.
It's okay, it was still on the superintendent's report, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so, so, all right, so, harkening back, I mean, we haven't really met for a while, but harkening back to some minutes we just approved. I didn't want to mention it because I didn't know what the status was, but the, the former Boys and Girls Club, has there been any decision made with that? I mean, I know you had some things in, in the, in the works.
The former Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, perhaps some GATRA busing or-
Yes, no, we're waiting on the town to set up the meeting because it really is part of the town's.
All right, and, and how about, like, with the gatemen, anything going on with that?
Again, the town is running because it's town-owned.
Okay, okay. So I was going through the vacancy report and the personnel report, which is the biggest I've ever seen, and, and just some, a couple things stuck out at me. What is an equity coordinator?
That is a stipend position that we are required to have to make sure that people are treated fairly, and if there's an issue, then they report to the equity coordinator, and the equity coordinator can investigate.
Like, what, like, what would an equity, what sort of issues would an equity coordinator field?
Any kind of discrimination that might happen.
Discrimination.
Yep, any kind of workplace, any kind of harassment.
And we, we, we're required to have that separate position?
We're required by the state.
And how much is that for the, for the stipend?
Oh, it's a negotiated stipend, I, I think-
I have to say it's like six hundred for the stipend. Six hundred?
All right, thank you.
One in each building.
One in each building.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, all right. And I think I saw this under the high school coaches. What is a faculty manager under coaches?
Want to come up?
Sure.
So oftentimes, there are multiple events happening at the high school, on high school grounds, or in the winter at our skating rink. We're required by MAA rules to have a site manager at all events, and there's a lot of conflicts during different seasons, and that includes, there has to be an official at a soccer game, football game, basketball, hockey, and some spring sports on occasion.
So whenever I'm at a soccer game, there is a site manager there?
There's a site manager at boy soccer games.
I didn't know that. Okay, I, I just, I thought that was the athletic director's job, I'm like, what?
There's been a site manager for as long as I've been in the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and, and I, I have to ask it only because I've been asked by a parent, but, but do we, do we currently have any active lawsuits against us where the school committee is named?
If we have any active lawsuits, we would have to be in executive session to discuss that.
Okay, all right. Yes, I'll take that with you offline. All right, um, all right, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? No? The next item on the agenda is reports of the school committee. Have there any school committee reports? No, there haven't been any meetings yet. No Cape Cod collaborative meetings yet.
No, not yet, September. I'm not sure which the date, but, hold on. So I, I am going to, I'm going to see if it's okay, I'm pretty sure it is okay. I want to send you guys the agenda and the meeting materials, and just let me know if you have any concerns or questions. It's, it's going to come in like five emails, they're so huge.
No, I would love that, actually, I'd like to see what, what happens there.
Yeah, at least see the agenda and say, hey, you know, because you want, you, I'd like to know where you think Wareham should be on this. I don't want to just go it alone and wing it, you know? Yeah, and you have to get back to me individually, just to, not to break the open meeting law and everything, yeah.
Right, right, okay. So also under reports of the school committee, just to go back, we did have a workshop meeting in the summer, and hopefully everyone found that valuable, and I would like to, to continue that and perhaps schedule another workshop meeting- And I would like to, to continue that and perhaps schedule another workshop meeting where maybe we could discuss goals of the school committee. The Wareham School Committee, from what I have seen, hasn't had written, you know, goals, but it's certainly something that we could discuss as a group, so I'd like to be able to schedule a workshop meeting for that. Just wondering what you think about that.
No, that, that, that's fine, but just to get back to the one we had regarding communication and such, what, are we going to follow, are we going to actually, just, I think there were about three members that would like to see something different. I mean, are we going to move forward with any of that?
Well, again, it has to go to policy review, so if you would like that to go to policy review, we can have that happen.
Okay. I got a bunch of things I'm going to ask to go on policy review. They're, they're going to be busy. They're going to be real busy.
What happened to the less is more.
No, no, less meaning, no, less meaning if it's redundant, you know?
I hear you, yes.
If we're already doing it.
But on that subject, Mike, so let me just, I do have it right here. So I was looking through the policies that apply to the school committee and that apply to procedure of the school committee. And there is a policy that we have called School Committee Standing Rules of Procedure. And in that policy, it states that any member of the public wishing to make a brief statement of general concern on an agenda item may, prior to the meeting, request permission in writing from the chair. Any such statement shall be addressed to the chair and the public will be recognized at the discretion of the chair. So that is in there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's for agenda items and such. Yeah, and they can speak on an agenda item at the discretion of the chair, but just, just in general, you don't know, you're not, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but you're not going to know if you want to speak on something till you hear about it.
Right. Well, all right, so we'll just, I mean, obviously we've discussed it and, but I just wanted to point out that that was in there.
I'm not very familiar with it.
Yeah, okay, all right. I had just, you know, it hadn't been part of our discussion before, so, okay. Is there any other business in the school committee?
So I just don't mean to put Emily on the spot, but I'm, I'm curious, what are you looking most forward to for the new school year?
Well, at the high school, I've been usually taking just like honors classes and stuff, but this year I can finally put myself in like AP and IB classes, which is interesting.
That's awesome. And one more question, are you coming back here?
Oh, yeah.
Just, just checking, it's, it's a long meeting, you know?
I hope to like interact more, like in...
Oh, no, I, it's your first time here, you're absorbing it all, yes.
Seeing what goes on before I...
No, I totally understand. I just hope we didn't scare you away, that's all. Thank you for, for volunteering to do this.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.